I'd like to call the meeting to order. Roll call of aldermen.
Alderman Hazel.
Here.
Alderman Cincilla.
Here.
Alderman Schmidt.
Here.
Alderman Bittner.
Here.
Alderman Randall.
Here.
Alderman Tyler.
Here.
Alderman Anthony.
Here.
Alderman Ovian.
Here.
Alderman Sillsby.
Here.
Alderman Diddleman.
Here.
Alderman Seibert.
Here.
Alderman White.
Here.
Alderman Galetti.
Here.
Alderman Elmore.
Here.
Alderman Wiggington.
Here.
Alderman Musgrove.
Here.
All the aldermen are present, roll call of department heads.
City Attorney Horner.
Here.
City Treasurer Hart.
Here.
Police Chief Clay. Fire Chief Poor. Ken Vaughn. Grace Carlisle.
Here.
Jamie Maitred. Tim Gregowitz. Jim Schneider. Leander Spearman.
Here.
Chuck Schaefer. Bob Sabo. Debbie Belleville.
Here.
And Anissa McCaskill.
Chuck Schaefer and Chief Clay are on vacation either the whole week or part of the week. At this time, I would ask everybody please stand for the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a heart that is just as strong as God.
I want to welcome everyone to this July 6th regular city council meeting. First of all, I'd like to remind everyone, if you've not been here before, if we would have some severe weather crop up during the meeting, the police are in the back of the room, they would help guide you, but across the lobby downstairs, across from the clerk's office, is the stairs to the basement. This is the deemed area that we believe is the safest place to be in case of high winds, et cetera. If we had to vacate the building because of fire, we'd ask that you carefully and cautiously go out. The front door is open and the rear door, but the side door over there on Washington, a lot of times is not kept open at night. But go out the front door, cross the street, and meet and gather in front of the sign, St. Clair County Building, over towards in front of the St. Clair County Building. The other thing is this evening, once we start public participation, I will, you raise your hand, I will call on you. You step up to the microphone, please give your name and try to keep your comments to two to three minutes.
No.
So that pretty much, and do speak loudly, aldermen, please use the microphones. We are videotaping our, for the Lindenwood, through the Lindenwood Services of Cable, and also it's being audio recorded for the purposes that we need to keep those tapes. So please speak into the microphone so they can hear you. At this time, I will ask that, there's no public hearing this evening scheduled, so we'll go straight to public participation, and I'll ask for those who would like to speak to please raise your hand. The first one I'm going to call on is I'm going to call on our state's attorney Brendan Kelly, first of all, who, I talked to him a little earlier today, he has some information he wants to share with you before he runs to another location tonight, and I told him he could go first.
Oh, yeah. Great, thank you, thank you for letting me hop up to the front here. I will be very, very brief, and I've got many citizens here that want to talk to you, and talk at you, and talk with you, and just talk all around, so I will be extremely brief. Just here for two reasons, one, just to remind you and thank you for your support of the Belleville Police Department, continue to please strongly support them, we work with them every day, and they do a terrific job, and anything you can do to support them has a big impact on public safety, not just in Belleville, but in the entire county, so please do that, and your firefighters, of course, you know, support them too. Second thing, the main reason I'm here and the main reason I'm visiting all the city councils and village boards in St. Clair County is my office has partnered with SWIC to create a public officials ethics course. It's a seven, seven class course, which is a pilot program, which is beginning at SWIC in August, anything and everything that you can think about as it relates to ethics and being a public servant, and this is open only to elected officials, so this is specifically for elected officials and their roles as elected officials, reinforcing certain tenets of Illinois law and national standards, federal law as well. Our first class will discuss public trust and public opinion, second class will talk about the Open Meetings Act and Freedom of Information Act, the third class will cover ethical conflicts, the gift ban act, whistleblower act, and the Public Official Prohibited Activities Act, fourth class will concentrate on the election code, campaign finance requirements, and voter integrity, fifth class will cover financial report requirements, annual audits, and statements of economic interest, sixth class will concentrate on the criminal consequences for violation of public trust, and the seventh and final class will have a special guest speaker, we'll be announcing that with SWIC, who those speakers are at the classes that we'll have, I will leave this here with you, I'll pass it to one of your aldermen here, a couple copies, how you can sign up through Southwest Illinois College, again, this is a, it's a great thing for newly elected officials and for people that have been serving a long time. Illinois obviously has a long, long history of getting beaten up as it relates to public integrity issues, and this is one way to prevent those things from happening, it's a hope, it's our hope that this is an approach that we're doing with SWIC that hopefully can be adopted throughout the state, make this kind of tool available for public officials. So I leave this here with you, and I appreciate the time.
Why don't you, we'll make copies and get it to all the aldermen, and we'll have it available, you give it to the clerk or whatever, we'll pass it in all their boxes and put it online or whatever.
Absolutely.
All the elected officials. Thank you. Okay, now I will start with this gentleman right here, he can go first, and then we'll keep moving.
My name is Mike Hawthorne, I live at 421 Springdale Drive in Belleville. I am a member of the Oktoberfest Committee. We are requesting that the Oktoberfest be extended one block east of the square, in other words, between High and Jackson. We plan on putting a stage down at Jackson and East Main, we have vendors to fill that area, we are trying to build on, or keep the momentum going from the Belleville 200 Festival last year that the Oktoberfest was part of. I urge you to vote for it, we have vendors, and we have bands to fill the second stage, and we think it would be a good thing for the Oktoberfest to keep it viable and healthy outlet as the last event of the summer, and I urge you to support that, thank you.
Yes, ma'am?
My name is Rose Wilson, I live at 322 West Ice Street in Belleville, and I'm here this evening to share my experience in regards of obtaining a FOIA request. I found out really quick that transparency is very selective in the city of Belleville. I came with my daughter-in-law to turn in to the request, paid my sewer bill, was told it would take a little while because there were a lot of papers, and fine, everything went well, and then I had a part on my FOIA request, I was told I couldn't have that, and it was in regards to the vault, and the city clerk told me he couldn't give me that information because Mr. Hagberg was never in the vault. I disputed that naturally, especially since the minutes reflect that he indeed was in there, and Mr. Cook lied. And during the dispute, the next bomb fell, and I was accused of entering the alderman's closet and stealing papers, and I was told it was on videotape, and the only place I could view it was in his office. I refused because by that time I wasn't going to go in an office with a person that acted the way he did. I tried to disengage in this whole thing, and just wanted my information, I got a little bit, FOIA rules require that when you deny a FOIA that you should give it in writing, mine wasn't given in writing. The second FOIA that I placed, I did get a letter, and it said I would get the information when the investigation was over. The investigation took place, videotapes reviewed, my witnesses were firm and solid, my statements were firm and solid, the statements of Mr. Cook went all over the place, it was anywhere from, I saw her in the closet, she was there for a few minutes, I heard the door of the closet, and all kinds of things, but when, what everything boiled down to is that I, an investigation still had to take place, wasting the police officer's time, and I was still accused of stealing. I just want to clarify something, Mr. Cook, I actually have legal access to that closet, never used it, have had for the last eighteen years as a member of the Belleville Human Relations Commission, was given by Mayor Kern, and Don Zach said he will be glad to verify that, he was at the meeting, unless things changed that I'm not aware of, that is still standing, although I still never have been in the closet, the only people I think that ever were in there was Mary McHugh and Harold Wright, we haven't had any reason to be in there. My second FOIA request, I'm still waiting. I've got what I got from the police department, I have still not gotten anything, even though the letter said as soon as the investigation is over, I would receive these requests. It seems that some people can obtain things very easy, Mr. Cook's got to understand, as a politician, you are subject to the same scrutiny as anybody else. So take responsibility, when a story happens in the paper, you write the story with your actions previously, that's how the story starts, with your actions. So I am very offended, I am not a thief, I am an upstanding citizen of this city, and I think if I would bring people here to verify that, they could. So I would like to have my FOIA request filled, thank you.
Anyone else this evening? Yes, ma'am?
My name is Lillian Schneider, I live at 219 Kansas Avenue in Belleville. My thing is, there was an article in the paper, I thought the name calling was going to stop, but apparently I see it hasn't. It was when we had the storm and the Shell Station thing went down. I'll read what was in the paper, and then I'll read my comments. According to Belleville Fire Department Assistant Chief Bud Jacobs, the canopy structure over the gas pumps at the service station in the 9600 block of West Main Street collapsed under the weight of water and landed on a car. No one was hurt in the incident, but a truck was damaged. Belleville Mayor Mark Eckert said problems with the awning at the Shell Station were brought to the city's attention by a resident about two weeks, two weeks ago, said personnel investigated and sent a letter to the property owner stating repairs were needed. Apparently, that didn't happen, and the storm water was too much, Eckert said. They've not been really good stewards. So if this was the only incident, I don't think it's proper to call a business not very good stewards when there's been a lot of other properties, believe me, that's been in worse shape than that. If there are a lot of violations, why hasn't the city offered to help in getting this up to code, just like all the money we have given to other big corporations? And if the crime is part of the reason that we're calling them not very good stewards, are they the only ones on West Main Street that have crime? What about the other businesses at the East In and the West In Shopping Centers? Believe me, many calls go to those stores. Is it because there is another gas station going up across from the shrine? We should be doing everything that we can to help keep what we have on West Main Street. And I'm going to turn in a FOIA to see if it is the problem of crime or other violations. I would like to have a list of calls to the police department made for the Shell Station at 9600 West Main Street, the amount of calls made to West In and the East In Shopping Centers, I would like to compare them and maybe talk to the corporate owners of this. How many violations at 9600 West Main have been corrected and been sent to, and have they been corrected? I think a couple of weeks, and we're calling them not very good stewards, that means you might as well tell them to leave Belleville.
Anyone else this evening like to speak? Yes, sir, in the back of the room?
Stewart Lanner, 318 South 29th Street, Belleville. I'd like to preface this, I am with German heritage, my dad didn't speak English until he went to the first grade, and the teacher told him to go home until he learned how to speak English, so I'm not anti-German, but I'm just wondering what this 12C tonight, German-themed tip, half-boroughhouse next to the Shrine on Route 15, what's with this German stuff? They killed approximately 60 million people in WW2, but I'd like to also say that if it wouldn't be for the Nazis putting the communists in their place, it wouldn't have been, Germany was going to go to either the Nazis or the communists, and if the communists would have took over Germany at that time, every single person in Europe would be under communist control from the English Channel, possibly even England, all the way to the Pacific Ocean.
Stewart, you're, hold it, you're straying, and we have some visitors even in the audience tonight from Germany, so I think you need to be a little...
Well, that's what I said, I'm German too.
Well, me too.
But here, this is what I'm trying to finish, in lieu of the hysteria over a flag that didn't kill anyone, and it took about 600,000 white people's lives to do something the slaves wouldn't do for themselves, and even today they need a white politician to help run Cahokia.
Stewart, Stewart, your time's up, and you're out of order. This is not pertaining to Belleville business. The next gentleman.
Hello, good evening, my name is Hassan Hamden, I stay at 308 Wilmington Drive, I am on, I'm on tonight's agenda actually, in reference to 5:30 North Douglas Avenue, I own a business over there, Sammy's Market, I'm here tonight, ladies and gentlemen, asking for a rezoning from A1 single-family residential to C2 commercial for use of a special permit use, special use variance use permit, I don't know, sorry, tongue-tied. But, real reason why I stepped up here, I was given a call earlier, told me about public participation, so I didn't know that this is the way it worked, so now that I'm up here, just want to share a little bit of my thoughts from being there, getting my business going, trying to grow it even more. Tonight, ladies and gentlemen, I'm not here to, as most people look at it, I'm not here just to become a, it's not a get-rich-quick scheme, what I'm trying to do is build something for myself, you know? I'm a young man, opened a store, it's doing okay right now, but, fact of the matter is, a vast majority of people that walk into my store, they want a drink. It's just, it's just the way it is. So, and me being, me being in business for so long, I hate to tell people I don't have it, or I can't sell it. So, on my own, and just from people that come into my store, I have here in my hand, as I have presented to the zoning board meeting, a list of over 500 residents from Belleville that do want alcohol in my store. And I understand that, you know, rezoning it would also be good because, it is, it's a store, I mean, it's not a home. I mean, the whole rezoning, the reason that I'm going through that process as well, ladies and gentlemen, is just because that's the way it works. You have to have it zoned commercial in order to operate a special use permit for an alcohol liquor license. So, I'm trying to build, really, is what I'm doing, I'm trying to expand, I'm trying to grow. I want to do what's good for my neighborhood, and that means providing any and everything for everybody, what they want, when they want it.
Okay. Very good, thank you. Is there anyone else this evening? Hearing that I will close public participation, we will move into the regular portion of the meeting. At this time, under presentations, I'd like to just simply say that this month, beginning of a new month, the month of July, we always recognize the character word of the month, the word this month is citizenship, meaning doing your share to make your community better and being a good neighbor. Good word, good word to live by, and again, we appreciate all our schools throughout the year, how they help us, educating all of us about these character words. Next thing I'd like to go to is the approval of the minutes, we have the city council meeting minutes from June 15, 2015. Do I hear a motion to accept and file? Mr. Wiggington, seconded by Mr. Cincilla, any discussion, corrections, additions or corrections? All in favor of accepting and filing the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, we have the claims, payroll, and disbursements, what's your pleasure? Don't all step up at once?
I move that we pay those.
I've got a motion by Alderman Cincilla to pay, I'm seconded by Alderman Schmidt, discussion or any questions about the claims, payroll, and disbursements? Hearing none, I'd ask for a roll call vote.
Hazel.
Aye.
Cincilla.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Diddleman.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Motion carries, reports, we have a treasurer's report from May 15, I'd ask, statement of cash and investments, we've got two separate things, right? The two separate reports, Dean?
Right.
Can we combine this into one motion to accept the treasurer's report and file for audit, and accept the statement of cash investments and file it for audit also? Motion to approve both of those? Set by Alderman Schmidt, seconded by Alderman Cincilla, do I have any discussions or questions? Hearing none, all in favor of accepting those two reports by the treasurer's office and having them filed for audit signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Oral reports, we have motion to approve the executive session minutes for the following dates, February 6, 2012, November 19, 2012, August 19, 2013, November 4, 2013, February 18, 2014, January 8, 2014, January 21, 2014, and September 2, 2014. What's your pleasure?
Move that we approve those things, and we, a second, motion by Alderman Seibert, seconded by Alderman Diddleman.
Any questions or comments about those minutes that we looked at at the last meeting? All in favor of accepting them and filing them signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We have a motion from Health and Housing, Mr. Cincilla?
I move that we approve the low bid of $16,200 from SNS Excavating for the demolition of 720 South 20th Street and 421 North 1st Street.
We have a motion, a seconded by Alderman Bittner, do I hear discussion? Yes, sir. Discussion? No? You have a comment?
Yeah, are these homes that we're demolishing, or what is it we're demolishing?
They're homes, the first one was a fire situation several years ago, it was tied up in insurance, it was a mess, took forever, and the other one is a home that has been vacated, that we have struggled with getting condemnation on, not too far from Franklin School, and we're finally at that door, it's taken years.
And once these are demolished, do we own the property, or who still owns the land?
We will, we will immediately file liens against the property for demolition, we don't automatically take control of the land, but many times over the years, they will walk away from it, and then we will be deeded it by the judge.
So there's no insurance, no insurance money that's going to, we're picking up the tab ourselves on this?
We will check on this 720 South 20th, but I think he's pretty much, Bobby, he's pretty much walked away from it.
No, he's got old bank money.
How's that?
They usually, insurance got the old bank money.
So we're going to make, we're going to try, many times we're successful, but not in all cases.
Yeah, yeah.
We go after it, believe me, Brian and Bobby go after everything we can get. I forgot, that guy there, he's probably, there's probably some insurance still on that one. I don't know about 1st Street, though, I think that's been walked away from so many years ago, I doubt that there's anything there. Okay, so we have a motion, a second, to approve this low bid of SNS, and Bobby did do a little investigating from a couple of other cities. First time we've used them, right, Bobby? But a couple of the other references had no problems, and we see no reason not to award this as the lowest, most responsible bidder. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Cincilla.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Diddleman.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Motion carries. Zoning Board of Appeals?
11C1, Hassan Hamden, request for rezoning from an A1 single-family residence district to C2 heavy commercial, top-rated convenience store located at 528 North Douglas Avenue, applicable portion of zoning code 60-6-1 through 60-6-7, and 60-6-47 through 60-6-52. Can we do them all?
I think we ought to go ahead, no, sit down, sir. I think we ought to go ahead and deal with this one, probably going to be one of the most. First of all, do I hear a motion to approve and have the proper ardent and strong? We have a motion by Alderman Hazel.
A second.
And seconded by Alderman Bittner, to approve this request and have the proper ardent and strong, and I'll now open it for discussion. Anybody have any comments about this case? Alderman Elmore? This is to rezone it to resident, to commercial, correct?
Yes, sir.
And Anissa, go ahead, let the staff person, hang on, sir, we'll have the staff person answer that question.
Yes, sir, the reason for the request for rezoning, the petitioner initially submitted to get a special use permit for a liquor license, in the A1 District, special uses do not include liquor license issuance, therefore he was told, because there was already a variance in place, that we would not do a variance on top of a variance, so he needed to consider rezoning the property because a variance was already in place to allow for the initial use, and typically, it's bad form to have a variance on top of a variance. There was discussion during zoning board of appeals, if the council saw fit, that they could go back and amend his initial variance to allow for the liquor license, if that was something that you wanted to do, but, that's the whole purpose of the rezoning, was the fact that special uses do not allow for liquor licenses in the A1 District, therefore there needed to be some sort of zoning to allow for that type of request, so that's why the two are coming together this evening.
The building is clearly a commercial building. It's in the middle of a residential area, I understand that, and then you have the MetroLink with all the, with all the traffic there, but that's a commercial building, and it has a parking lot, I mean, you can't hardly make it a residence, and the people of that neighborhood are the ones who made the variance years ago, made the new ordinance, rather, and I'm thrilled that the city council gave this gentleman the variance to open the store under those circumstances whenever that happened a couple of years ago. But it is still, anyway, slice it, it's a commercial building, and I think we need to take a good, close look at what the building looks like, and the fact that it was the people of that neighborhood that asked to keep it residential, and in the spirit of trying to protect these neighborhoods, and the people that live there and are raising families there, I think there's got to be some strong thought to those people that asked for this ordinance to be drawn years and years and years ago, and at the same time, when a variance is reasonable, that it could possibly be granted, which is what happened, if I understand it correctly, if I'm incorrect about something, but that's my understanding on the history of this property. Yeah, no, I think you're pretty close. Alderman Schmidt?
If we rezone this, would this stay with Mr. Hamden, or would it be a permanent zoning?
If you rezone, it's permanent.
Once it's rezone, zoning stays in place, special use permits are typically issued in the, in the name of the applicant only.
Yes, sir.
What percentage of sales will become alcohol-related versus grocery and non-alcoholic?
I'll let the gentleman answer that, sir. Two different subjects here.
For your permission, sir, depending on my store, it is a market, out of 21 cold doors, I have in effect right now 17 non-alcoholic doors, and I present four alcohol doors.
Of your cooler space?
Yes.
But he asked about the receipts, what do you anticipate the receipts being the difference between the market as you have today, and what will that do for you, percentage-wise, do you think, increase your business with alcohol?
I can't, I'm sure it would, I'm sure it would increase without a doubt, but could I put a number on it or even guess? No, nothing is promised.
Okay.
But, just for, just for the record, like I was stating, you know, it's, I'm not, it's not a liquor store, it's, it's a market, like I said, it's, it's not, that's not my general, that's not where my revenue is coming from, this is just a convenience to these folks, this is completing it, not really completing it, but it's also adding what people come in looking for, you know? in looking for, you know?
Okay. Mr. Wiggington?
Mayor, a couple of questions. I think Alderman Ovian, I think what he was asking is, in his, his store, what percent not of sales will be liquor, but of his inventory? Is his inventory going to be ten percent of his total, liquor going to be ten percent of his inventory, twenty percent, thirty percent? I think, I think maybe a lot of the neighbors are saying also, you know, is this going to be, are we, are we going to cut down the groceries to only fifty percent and have liquor fifty percent? I know there's a chain of convenience stores in this town that at one time, the liquor was probably ten percent of the floor space and now it probably takes up twenty-five percent of the floor space. So I think one question is, you know, how much investment is going to go into this? And the other thing is, is this a twenty-four hour market? Is liquor going to be able to be able to sold twenty-four hours? Or, you know, I don't know even what his hours are.
Can I make a point, Mayor, that, let's make sure that we all understand that there are two separate issues on the agenda tonight, correct? This is a zoning issue. This is not a liquor license issue conversation.
The second conversation will be about liquor. So. First conversation.
Let's just keep that in mind. This is about zoning and Anissa clarifying the zoning laws and rules and has really nothing to do.
So even if he, if he sells the business, two months from now, the zoning stays with the property. A special use permit stays with, with the applicant. So, and I, I hear, I heard what you said, Alderman Elmore, and you're correct. That building was probably built.
Nineteen seventy-nine.
I was going to say, it was in the seventies. Because I knew the gentleman who ran it when it was a convenience store. What?
John Brisch was the gentleman who ran it before.
I know him very well. Worked with him years ago. So, I mean, it was in the late seventies when it was done. So that's the first question at hand here. Do we change the zoning?
Yes, sir.
And the reason we proposed it this way is because like Anissa said, you're putting a variance on top of a variance otherwise. We have another question. Paul?
Yeah, I'd like to hear from the Aldermen or people that live in Ward, if there are any here in this town.
Mr. Cincilla?
This, this unit sits right on the edge of Ward one and it touches, does it touch seven? I know it touches two.
Not anymore, it used to. Used to be in seven. Used to be in seven.
Across the street. So it's a really unusual piece of property. It, as people, most people look at it and say, well, that's built for a store of some sort. It's built for a commercial property because it doesn't have a house front to it. When it was, I guess it was two years ago, we were faced with this situation. We had many people come forward with a petition saying that they did not want to change the zoning. And the question was that they were, the idea is, we don't want to give up anything that we've called residential. Now, I myself look at it as it's right on the other side of the street is commercial property. If we have any development in that area, it will be on the opposite side of the street. Behind it is a nursery. Okay? So with that in mind, I do not object. Also, we've had, and this is about the, the liquor license, but we have a petition signed by four, five hundred people. And I've, I think we listen to the will of the people and it's pretty well been stated.
Alderman Hazel?
Yeah, and I've had an opportunity to, to talk to the applicant numerous times. I've been into the store. And one thing I do want to point out, as Ken said, is that we do have commercial in that area already. And as I was campaigning for this office, I did have an opportunity to speak with a lot of people in the neighborhood. I did not run across anyone who was opposed to the store or the specific question that we will be addressing in a few minutes. And most of the customers that, that he is serving, it's foot traffic. And I've watched the store to see if it is a hangout or if there's a loitering issue or if there's any problems at the store. I've not observed any. And I think that the people that the store is serving, especially some who do not drive, it is a benefit to the neighborhood.
Mike?
Yes, I think this would send a strong message from the council that we are behind small business here in Belleville. We need all the businesses we can get here in town to generate sales tax revenue, but also, as my fellow Aldermen are stating, is, this is the will of the people. We have five hundred people that want this store there and make it viable. So I think, I'm going to back this and I think we should, we should all get behind this, this gentleman and go for this rezoning. Thank you.
Alderman Schmidt?
Well, I just wanted to state that when this came up before, I had a number of calls against it becoming a store. But this time, none. And I, I've seen the petition and, you know, there may be ten people that are against it. I think they're more against, I'm not sure what they're against. But anyway, ten, they're against, and so I think we do need to listen to the majority of the people. I've been in the store. It seems like a well-run. It's attractive, kept clean. It looks like an asset to that neighborhood. And I think that if there were any potential, I think we were able to maybe keep an eye on it. And if it would have become a problem, we could take action at that time.
Alderman Galetti, you haven't spoken yet.
Well, since Janet.
Use the microphone, please.
Since Janet just spoke up, did, or did you sign this for them? It's got your, does this?
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure it was you.
So did my husband.
What is, I just want to get the zoning thing figured out here. What variance did this property originally get?
I guess it got a variance, and this is still in here? It got a variance to, to be a convenience store in a, in a residential.
Correct, because of the zoning. So the commercial use in itself was a variance.
So it's, it's A one, single-family residence.
Yes.
And the first variance, or the variance that it was given to it was?
To allow for the current use.
Commercial use.
Yes.
Which was done automatically if it sits vacant for a year.
And it sat vacant for many years.
Right. But it happens automatically by law.
It, it, it reverts back to residential. So it was a commercial property and then it sat vacant for over a year. So it reverted back to A one.
Okay.
So, so for some, whatever reasons, when the commercial use came back, rather than rezoning it back to its original commercial use, a variance was given for the use that you now have.
Which, now, is the variance the exact same thing as what we're asking it to be rezoned?
I'm sorry.
What I'm trying to.
Are you asking if the original zoning was the same thing?
What I'm trying to figure out is how is the rezoning of it different than the variance it currently has?
The rezoning, as we said, the difference is, the variance is a, is a approval by this council to grant somebody a change of, of zoning. It's a temporary change based for that applicant only.
Correct.
If that applicant moves, it goes, it reverts back. It doesn't necessarily carry on. Changing it to commercial would say, finally recognize that this property.
The reason why it's a rezoning versus the variance that currently exists is, under the variance that currently, currently exists, it's still in A one. Special uses in A one do not include establishments with liquor licenses. So in order to get, in order to obtain a special use permit, it has to be zoned in a classification that permits establishments with liquor licenses as special use, which is the C two zoning district.
So the commercial variance doesn't, doesn't allow it to operate like that?
Right. No, it would require another variance, and this, and this was right on, it would be a variance on top of a variance, which you shouldn't do.
And they did that years ago, but that didn't make it right.
So the variance is commercial, but it has to be zoned, which is what the variance still is, commercial, in order for it to use, to have the special use.
Yeah, unless you went back and amended the original variance. This is really the better approach to afford a special use.
I just want to make sure it's not necessary, you know?
It is, it is necessary. An action, an action by the council is necessary and this is really the best route, if you want to take that option.
Alderman Ovian?
If the council approves this tonight, sir, what will be your hours of operation if you're granting the variance to sell liquor?
My hours will stay as they are today, nine AM to eleven PM.
And let me just add to this. The young man and I have not had, the liquor commissioner sets the hours.
Okay.
So, once you decide tonight if these two requests are approved, then he and I will sit down and have a talk about the hours. And we will, I will ultimately have the authority, per our ardentice book, to set those hours. And, you know, it's not, you know, it's, we're going to have that discussion because I've been around long enough to know that there was some history years ago and we're going to take it slow and, but we will, I will sit down and listen to him. But it's not, it's not guaranteed because you vote here tonight for, you know, and we're not approving his hours of operation tonight. We're approving, is there a liquor variance? And first of all, we're, the first vote here is we're approving the zoning change.
Right.
Yes, sir?
Mayor, on the, on the liquor variance, you know, you know, I, I, first of all, I'd like to congratulate Mr. Hamden for doing a great job in refurbishing that business. That thing's set there for years and years and years. And, and, you know, this council didn't know what the heck to do with that thing. We, we, we've got, everybody's got liquor licenses. I mean, let's, let's, let's be for real here. You can go in CVS, Walmart, Walgreens, Shop and Save. Nobody's hanging out around these places. Their owners, their owners are just like the landlords. They make their establishments. And, and, you know, if these landlords or owners tend to have bad habits letting people hang out around their places and do bad things, then we put them out of business, you know? That's, that's the way to do this. You know, let's give these people a chance to get their business going and see if they can flourish and, you know, maybe add that to that community over there. I think, I think, I think it'll work. I think he's proven that he can run a decent business.
There's obviously a change in sentiment by the owners or the residents at this time because not too many years ago, there was a heavy outcry in here. So we've seen that. But it is still a predominantly residential neighborhood and that's the purpose of this process, to make sure that we don't negatively impact a neighborhood. Alderman Randall?
Yes, your honor. If there are no further comments from the council, could we call for the vote?
I think we're ready. I'd ask for a roll call vote. I vote would give permission to the first question of changing the zoning of this particular property at five twenty-eight North Douglas from residential, A one, single-family residential to C two, heavy commercial. Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Cincilla.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Diddleman.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Do I hear a motion now to, you want to read the next one?
Eleven C two, Hassan Hamdun, a request for special use permit in a C two, heavy commercial zoning district for a liquor license for Sammy's Market located at five-two-eight North Douglas Avenue, applicable section of the zoning code sixty-six dash fifty.
I hear a motion. Motion by Alderman Bittner, second by Alderman Schmidt to approve this request for a special use permit to issue a liquor license. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Cincilla.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Diddleman.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Elmore.
No.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
I'm sorry if I didn't see your hand jump up there. The ayes do have it and we will have to have a discussion before you move forward. Yes, sir?
Question, Mr. Your Honor, when would you want me to, to schedule?
You call my deputy liquor commissioner next day or so and we'll talk. We'll set up a meeting.
Yes, sir.
Okay?
Anything else you want to say?
No, not tonight. You passed the next hurdle. I'd go ahead. There's no further objections. I'm going to let him read the remainder of them together, okay?
Sounds good. Eleven C three, Kenneth Foltz Jr., request for a special use permit in a C two, heavy commercial zoning district to operate a used car dealership located at thirty-eight twenty-seven North Belt, Belt West, applicable section of zoning code sixty-six dash fifty. Number eleven, case seventeen, Daniel Gonzalez.
No, sir, you're okay. You can't, we can't address.
Request for a special use permit in a C two, heavy commercial zoning district for a liquor license for Casa Maria Restaurant located at one hundred North High Street, applicable section of the zoning code sixty-six dash fifty.[1450.44] of the zoning code 60-6-50. 11C5, case 18, McBride Green Mount Manor LLC, request for a planned unit development amendment in a C4, commercial district for revised elevations for Green Mount Manor located at Zero Commons Parkway, 2500 Winter Creek Drive and 2504 Winter Creek Drive, applicable section of the zoning code 60-4-6.
Do I hear a motion to approve, have the proper ordinance drawn for these cases? Motion by Alderman Schmidt, do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Anthony. Discussion on any of these cases? All in favor of having the following read cases approved and have the proper ordinances drawn signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We move on. Motion's from Economic Development Committee. Mr. Kinsella.
I make a motion on behalf of the Economic Development Committee to approve an amended development agreement with TJBC Incorporated for the remodeling and expansion of the existing facility located at 4204 West Main.
Have a motion by Alderman Kinsella, second by Alderman Schmidt. Do I hear discussion? Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Silsby.
Aye.
Diddleman.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Motion carries. We have a motion from the Streets and Grades.
Yes, sir. A motion from Streets and Grades Committee to approve the low bidder Hank's in the amount of $3,271,554.97 for the North Illinois Streetscape Project.
We have a motion by Alderman Seibert, second by Alderman Diddleman. Let me just explain, I put a letter in your packet that we had to send to IDOT. This project came in approximately $200,000 roughly over the engineer's estimate. IDOT, you know, wants to make sure that we are understanding of that, but as you folks know, we've been working on this project. It first started in 2003. We have much invested with property acquisition, so I think you understand, we have, Hank's is certainly the lowest and most responsible bidder and very, very familiar and very capable of doing streetscapes as our history has shown. But this is going to be $200,000 that we will have to budget next year, correct Jamie? In TIF money next year to finish this project, just so there's no secrets, it's just the way it came in, okay? Everybody understand that? If there's no further questions, I call for a roll call vote on this motion.
Hazel.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Silsby.
Aye.
Diddleman.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Motion carries. We go on to Communications?
12A, Communication from the Parks and Recreation Board.
Hold it, hold it. Yes, sir. I was going to, let's read the first two, and then we'll come back, okay?
12A, Communication from the Parks and Recreation Board recommending to name the park property at 1100 Hekker, the old Belleville Pool location, Ebsen Park. This would honor both Buddy Ebsen and his dad, Dr. Christian Ebsen. Several local historians were involved in this decision and appreciate linking the park to Belleville's history. 12B, Communication from American Miners Association for Monument Proposal on the 900 block of West Main Street to commemorate the coal miners of West Belleville who started the American Miners Association. 12C, Communication from Belleville-
Let's hold, let's hold.
I'm sorry, that's right, thank you.
Let's read those first two. I asked a motion for the first two. Alderman Schmidt made a motion to approve the first two, second by Alderman Tyler. Any discussion about these first two communications read?
Yes, sir, I have a question.
Yes.
Regarding 12B, where the monument proposal, what is the exact location within the property itself?
Okay, it's our property.
In the greenscape area?
It'll be in the green space area. This, what, I talked to Jack Lachene, and Tim and I are supposed to meet him out there the next couple of days. It would be basically in the green space area, right at the corner of Ninth and Main, because that's where the old building stood, where this first, where the very first miners' local was originated in the country.
Are you suggesting it's going to be in front of the parking lot? In front of the curb?
Yeah. Or is it going to be- There's a green space there, there's pretty good green space, about four feet or five feet there. Yeah. Yeah. It's green space, right there in the corner.
Okay.
So, it would be located right in there.
And what will it look like?
It's going to be a three-foot by three-foot piece of granite.
Okay.
That, that's going to have it inscribed on there that this was the site of the first, first national miners' local in the country.
Thank you.
So, okay? Does that answer that question? So, we have a motion and a second to approve 12A and 12B communications. All in favor of approving those two communications signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Let's go to 12C.
12C, Communication from Belleville Oktoberfest requesting extending the festival additional block, High Street to Jackson Street. The plan is to place a German-themed tent stage there for the weekend that will be open from Friday evening on September 18, 2015, through closing at 11:00 p.m. on Saturday, September 19, 2015.
First of all, do I hear a motion to approve?
I move we approve.
Do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Diddleman. Motion was by Alderman Schmidt. This is for approval. We now open it for discussion. Any, yes, Alderman White.
Yes, your honor, at the June 1st meeting, the same issue came up, and at that time, the representatives for Oktoberfest had indicated they were going to talk to the businesses that had the objection to where the music tent was going to be placed and the closing of the street. I would like to know if that meeting ever took place, and if it did, what the results of it were.
No, we did not have a meeting with any of the businesses. To mine out, I've been on vacation.
I'm going to let Alderman Tyler, he did communicate with quite a few of them.
The following week, I went to, there's 17 businesses in that one block area. I went and spoke to the owners of 14 of them. Three businesses were against it. It was overwhelmingly, people supported this, the business owners, they thought it would help their business. They were welcome for the people to come down there because the people are going to be parking down there anyway, so they'd just as soon have people in front of their storefronts. Like I said, out of 17 businesses, 11 were for it, three were against, and three I didn't get to talk to.
And I'll add, Mr. White, if I may, I attended the Belleville Main Street meeting that happened to be discussion that the last meeting they've had, and while there were a few people, new people showed up, which was good, who had been in opposition of some things in the past, the, the Main Street overwhelmingly approved this request also.
I have no objection to the Oktoberfest. In fact, I enjoy it every year. My, my question is, is the tenure of what we're, what we're doing as a council? When we sat on June 1st, that meeting, we're going to discuss the placement of these tents, and we don't do it, and we bring it up for a vote. I just have a hard time personally supporting that. And with no disrespect to Alderman Tyler, I mean, Alderman Tyler, 30 years in the Air Force, sorry, sir. That addresses a number of people that are in favor of, and in fact, I'm personally in favor for myself. I just think we need to, as a council and as a city, when we say we're going to address a problem, before we vote on it, we have to, we have to do that, and I can't honestly vote for this without hearing that. I know.
I would just say this, I was absent, as you know, my son's wedding on June 1st. I was filled in about the meeting afterwards and that this was tabled, or at that time, you know, postponed. None of the, no one, no one who had expressed some concerns about opposing this had come forward to my office at any time, and, and I was ready to have conversation because I thought maybe we'd have some dialogue about that. And to my knowledge, no one was here this evening, and like I said, there was one person who came to the Main Street meeting and actually indicated they're going to possibly start to get more involved because I suggested the communication would be much better if they were a part of that system. But even then, there was no real negative conversation about opposing this. So, I, I just kind of felt like it had, like Alderman Tyler had reported to me, I kind of felt like it had kind of been absorbed basically in that it was probably going to this, you know, advance, and there was not a whole lot of opposition like it started out. Alderman Elmore?
We asked at that June 1st meeting about some kind of map, some kind of layout. Can we, it's not in our packet, right?
I only have one copy. Well, maybe not.
I guess my question is, and you can just answer this. It sounds like you said in the public participation, you have a need for the space. What I'd hate to see us do is close off some block for one lemonade stand.
No, 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 we, no.
And that was my question to him also, and you got, you got plenty of places, plenty of ways to fill it. I think what, what happened was, and what, what was brought to my attention was, last year's Oktoberfest was so successful, being the 200th, we've got more people now showing an interest.
We need one.
And, and a few years ago, I go back, when I sat down with this committee, early years I was mayor, and said, we've got to crank this up, this, this festival is really kind of waning. So, now we've kind of cranked it up, and, and they're wanting to expand it, so it's just the opposite of what we kind of warned them of a couple of years ago. Alderman Hazel?
One of the things that we had mentioned whenever we talked about getting a layout of the plan of where they were situating the tents and other, other booths downtown was the possible placements of that tent that they're wanting to, the stage that they're wanting to expand for, the possible placement here on, on 159, just north of Main Street. And the way that I see and understand that, we're going to end up, if that would be a solution or an option, we would end up with two music stages too close to one another.
Yeah, that's, that's the problem. You have the main stage on the square.
Right.
Right?
Yes.
So, this would take it down to the corner of Jackson and Main, the second stage. In the 200th, we were at, we were down a block yet, but, but this makes the two music venues actually possible. Any closer than that, they're overlapping. Alderman Schmidt?
We go down this far for some other festivals like the Chili Cook Off anyway, don't we?
Chili Cook Off has been, and if you remember a number of years ago, when we had, and we listened to the merchants, we had said that we would certainly take into consideration before we established anything new. The Oktoberfest actually is probably our oldest festival.
Right.
And, and they're actually coming back to requesting more space like they did in the early years because now they're actually cranking it up a notch and it's getting more vibrant again. It, it backed off a little bit years ago because it had kind of lost some of its oomph, but now it's, it's, after last year's very successful 200th, it's got a chance to really, I think, keep the momentum. So, your face tonight, to either ma, I, we're very understanding. I think it was good process. I think there was a lot of good communication, and it's true, we're never going to make everybody 100% happy, but this is an existing event that's been around forever, and at one time did go down that far with the Oktoberfest many years ago. It did. It's just we had backed it off when it kind of had waned a little bit.
And the other-
Yes?
And I just had one other quick question that we were talking about at June 1st was, there was concern about how the, particularly that section, which has a lot of retail, gets closed off, you know, a full day before the festival even starts. Is that what your plans are?
Well, the square is closed up on Thursday at noon, or 5:00.
5:00.
And then we bring our equipment in. Everybody that has food brings their equipment in and sets up to open Friday morning at 11:00.
Same with this section here, Thursday at 5:00?
Yes.
So, this was-
High Street would remain open at that time.
Yeah.
High Street remains open the whole festival, right?
Well, no, High, High Street in this case here-
Traffic control?
In this case here, if you're going to have the festival going right down there, you, you, it's very hard to keep it totally, completely open. We can take a look at that, but that's a nightmare once you have that complete next block, that's going to be an active block. We've had some, we've had some exceptions over the years. We had some, like during the art show, we kept High Street open because we had some, you know, just some kids' art or something that, or some, you know, minor stuff that wasn't a real attraction. This here, if you're going to have booths and music, I, I think the police chief and I would, would agree, you're going to have to close off High Street. Now, you know, it might not be closed off immediately the first thing in the day, we might be able to work that out earlier in the day when the traffic's very minimal, but the festival itself actually goes wind to wind.
11:00 Friday through 11:00 p.m. Friday, and the same on Saturday, 11:00.
But we, we try to keep, we try to keep High Street open a little bit during the day sometimes to help Mr. Concreit knows, but, but it, when you have that block filled with stuff, High Street's got to be shut down for the majority of the time.
Do we need to amend the motion to close High Street, or?
High Street will be dictated by the police and for safety. It's, it's a safety call. And, and, but they have to understand, with this approval, High Street will be closed for the majority of the time by doing this.
Mayor, also too, I think, number one, the exposure for the downtown and for the city of Belleville on these events is fabulous. I don't know if the council realizes, but we have actually 18 downtown events, which does not include the diva nights and the free concerts, and they're pretty much packed in from late spring until early fall. And I, I think going forward, we need to be very prudent on looking at these on a case by case situation as more of these people come forward. How many more can we pack into a, basically a four-month period of time? Being a business in myself, I, I understand the concerns of the businesses. However, you know, I thought about, well, if we moved it to other parts of the city, if we go to a park, there's always a problem of rain and mud. Now, we're on concrete and asphalt. I know all the electrical infrastructure is in downtown to support all this, so even though we'd love to move it around to other parts of the city, this is probably the best-case scenario. But I think going forward, we just need to be prudent and look at these on a case by case.
And really, that's what we're doing here, is we're really having a dialogue and we're not, you tabled it or you postponed it, and we continue to investigate it, and it's just a matter of what your, what your pleasure is. But, you know, once again, if it doesn't work out, then I think, you know, that can be a discussion of next year. But this is the first time they've come with an expansion, and I think it's truly because last year's 200th was so successful, we have a chance to, they have a chance to build on it, and I think it's, it's something to really consider this year. So, we have a motion and a second to approve it, right on the floor?
Yes.
Who made the original motion?
I do.
You did, who made the second?
Diddleman.
Ed, okay. I'm going to ask for a roll call vote.
Hazel.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Silsby.
Aye.
Diddleman.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
No.
Galetti.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
The aye votes have it. We go on to the next communication, which is going to be 12D. If there's no objection, we'll read 12D and 12E together.
Okay, 12D, Communication from Betty Keaton, Special Events Fundraiser, Chairperson for Charity Home, requesting permission to hold their Charity Home Promise 5K Run Walk on Saturday, September 26, 2015, starting and ending at Lindenwood University and starting at 8:00 a.m. to raise money for Charity Home. 12E, Communication from Vila Force Racing Team, requesting permission and support in staging a competitive cycling event in the city of Belleville on August 16, 2015, from 6:30 a.m. until 5:00 p.m. Vila Force Racing Team, a USA cycling permitted racing team in partnership with Nelson &amp; Nelson are interested in bringing the excitement of competitive cycling as well as families, fans, and athletes from around the bi-state region back to Belleville for a fourth year.
Okay, do I hear a motion to approve? Alderman Seibert, approve those two requests?
Yes, sir.
Second, second by Alderman Schmidt. Do I hear discussion? All in favor of approving these two communications signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have petitions, we have non-resolutions. I'd ask for a motion to read by title only, Resolution 3233 and Resolution 3234.
Second.
Motion by, who's this? Motion, motion by Alderman Galetti, second by Alderman Schmidt. All in favor of reading those by title only signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
14A, Resolution Number 3233, Resolution authorizing sale of personal property. 14B, Resolution Number 3234, Resolution authorizing easement agreement for parking with Bank of Belleville.
Do I hear a motion and a second? Motion by Alderman Silsby to approve, second by Alderman Schmidt. Any discussion? Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Silsby.
Aye.
Diddleman.
Aye.
Seibert.[1343.16]
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Motion carries, we go on to the next communication, which is gonna be twelve D. If there's no objection, we'll read twelve D and twelve D together.
Okay, twelve D, Communication from Betty Keaton, Special Events Fundraiser, Chairperson for Charity Home, requesting permission to hold their Charity Home Promise 5K Run Walk on Saturday, September twenty-sixth, two thousand and fifteen, starting and ending at Lindenwood University and starting at eight AM to raise money for Charity Home. Twelve E, Communication from Vila Force Racing Team, requesting permission and support in staging a competitive cycling event in the city of Bellevue on August sixteenth, two thousand and fifteen from six-thirty AM until five PM. Vila Force Racing Team, a USA Cycling permitted racing team, in partnership with Nelson and Nelson are interested in bringing the excitement of competitive cycling as well as families, fans, and athletes from around the bi-state region back to Bellevue for a fourth year.
Okay, do I hear a motion to approve? Alderman Seibert, approve those two requests?
Yes, sir.
Second, second by Alderman Schmidt. Do I hear discussion? All in favor of approving these two communications signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have petitions, we have non-resolutions. I'd ask for a motion to read by title only, Resolution Thirty-two Thirty-three and Resolution Thirty-two Thirty-four.
Second.
Motion by, who's this, motion, motion by Alderman Galetti, second by Alderman Schmidt. All in favor of reading those by title only signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Fourteen A, Resolution Number Thirty-two Thirty-three, Resolution Authorizing Sale of
Personal Property. Fourteen B, Resolution Number Thirty-two Thirty-four, Resolution Authorizing Easement Agreement for Parking with Bank of Bellevue.
Do I hear a motion and a second? Motion by Alderman Sillsby to approve, second by Alderman Schmidt. Any discussion? Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Motion carries, I'd ask for a motion to read by title only, Ardent Seventy-eight Seventy. Motion. Motion by Alderman Bittner, do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Anthony. Discussion on reading by title only, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Fifteen B, Ordnance Number Seventy-eight Seventy, Case Fourteen, Hassan Hamden.
Okay, and this is, this is the one that deals with the liquor? That's right.
Yes, ma'am.
I move, we accept and file the ordinance.
You mean, you wanna, you wanna prove Ardent Seventy-eight Seventy? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Tyler, do I hear any discussion? Further discussion? Alderman?
The, I'm sorry, the only point I was gonna make, we did make duly noted the large amount of signatures for it, and that's great, I appreciate those people taking the time to sign it. There is also a petition of the people that abut the property, that are trying to do everything they can to keep their neighborhood peaceful and quiet, and I just hope that we will really take, you will really take a really close look. There's not a whole lot of good alcohol sales for the peace of a community after eleven o'clock.
Well, the, I will tell you that I will look it over, the police chief and I and the city attorney will have some dialogue before we make, before I make that decision. So we have a motion, we have a second about approving the variance for liquor. As I told you before, the final hours are decided, and, and the two people I certainly consult with are my city attorney and the police chief when I make those decisions. So, we have a motion and a second, correct?
Yes.
Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Motion carries, at this time, if there's nothing, yes, ma'am?
Oh, I was gonna.
I'd ask for a motion to go into executive session for the purposes to discuss personnel, litigation.
Eighteen A.
What?
Eighteen A.
Yeah.
I'm sorry?
Oh, never mind, I'm sorry.
Property acquisition or transfer of property, and, and we, we don't have any other additional executive session minutes tonight, that should've been taken off. Do I hear a motion to go in for those purposes? Motion by Alderman Schmidt, second by Alderman Bittner. All in favor of going into executive session for those purposes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Do we have five minutes?
No.
No, we're not, we're not. We will come out, we have one more motion to vote. Any more coming in, Tim? Yeah. I know, I know, that's why I just was aggravating you. That's embarrassing. Okay, we're back in open session, we have one item on the agenda. I'm gonna start out with asking for a motion. Tim, do we have a price on this motion?
It's on the backside.
Okay, I just don't have it on the agenda, what, what's the price?
Twenty-four two-nine-two.
Twenty-four thousand, two-nine-two?
No.
Twenty-four nine forty-two.
Okay.
Twenty-four thousand.
Okay, I got it right here, he's, my handy-dandy attorney's got it. Okay, at this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve for Hank's excavating emergency repair on the West Bellevue Bike Trail, which we'll talk further about here in a second, which is for the practical purposes, real close to, right behind Altoff High School, for the sum of twenty-four thousand, nine hundred and forty-two dollars. Do I hear a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Alderman Seibert, second by Alderman Anthony, it's in your ward.
Thank you.
We now have a motion on the table, I'm gonna ask Tim Gregawitz to kind of explain a little bit, where, how this happened.
Yes, this was brought to my attention a little bit before the, the June rains had come, and as you know, the June rains were the, the highest on record. The, the person that brought it to me had noticed that some of the trail was separating near this, this fence line, and hopefully the pictures can give, show it a little justice.